Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order of the regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission, Tuesday, October 28, 2015. And I wonder if wrong would you serve for Kevin Pearl?
Sure.
We have two items on the agenda. And the first is CGS 824 for the fiscal year 2016 capital improvement plan. And it is, you've got Board of Ed and Town, which order do you guys, do you guys want to speak to that, or whatever, what do you want?
Sure. Jeff has graciously asked, allow me to go first because I have a Board of Education meeting to get to that's just starting.
Okay, great, go ahead.
So I just have three projects to speak to. Good evening, I'm Burke Leclair, Business Manager, Simsbury Public Schools. And you have a copy in your packet of a brief PowerPoint from our public hearing. And the first project was some further spending on our district network infrastructure efforts, $200,000. And the highlights on that really are trying to improve the speed of our switches and our backbone to our overall network, which connects all seven schools and also this building. And we also have some servers that need to be replaced and some additional wireless access points in some of our schools. We've done a very good job the past years of having wireless in all our buildings, just some further areas that have been determined to have some need there. Any questions on that project before I move on?
That's all the fiber that's going on, that all the fiber guys are slicing up?
Actually, that's a town project that is, this is more internal to our buildings, this replacement of switches.
You guys gonna ride that fiber or no?
We actually own the bulk of the fiber and the town and Board of Ed totally share in that. So these latest areas are being done by Rick Bazano from the town and they're linking to existing Board of Ed and Town fiber. So it's just, it's actually giving us redundancy, both the Board of Ed and the town. Very good then.
Thanks.
And the next project is our central school. It's a partial roof replacement project, just the EPDM portion, the flat portion towards the middle of the building. If you're familiar with Central School, this is a little bit over 22 years old and was actually the first section of this EPDM that we had replaced. And it's ready to have its life extended. And so we're looking for a state grant, as we have in past years, to partially reimburse for that. In order to go through the state process, it adds some time to that, to the process. So it would actually be first to hire an architect, go through the grant process this year in the next summer to actually do that. Do you have any questions on that? See, an estimate of the cost there and it's a total budget of $770,000. It's about 24,400 square feet of roof that we're needing to work on. And then lastly, our climate control project. We're focusing on local areas within each of our seven school buildings to try to improve, primarily from the cooling end of things here. And we do have some portions of our buildings that have AC. And we focus here based on working with the engineering firm, Fire Associates. We really tried to target the most cost-effective but also long-term way of making improvements. And we've had some experience with the ductless split type systems. We've done it on a limited basis in high school and Henry James. And we feel that generally speaking, that is the method that will help us to cool some of the particular rooms in each building that have the hottest temperatures in the spring and the fall shoulder seasons. We also have the possibility with this funding of doing several larger spaces in high school and Henry James. So for example, we could do the cafeteria at the high school possibly. We could do either the sort of the band room wing of Henry James or a gym area there. Those are much bigger ticket items. So we have a process to start making progress there. We will not be able to fund the auditorium at the high school because the current estimate on that, which they were able to update for us, was well in excess of a million dollars. And that had been the original plan, and this was first on the capital list a number of years ago. It's now, it's now over a billion dollars would be the current estimate. So rather than utilize what is several million dollars of requested funding for one small location, we're really trying to improve the areas in all of our seven schools. So this is our, this is our plan in working with our principals to try to hit some of the priority areas. And the other area at the high school that could possibly be done, which would be very helpful if we have a rainy graduation, would be AC in the new gym there. Some people call it the gold gym. That would be something that we could actually do for relatively small dollars. So if there are any questions on what we're looking to do there, I'm happy to try to clarify that further.
Yeah, so on these large, the larger gathering area, you're not looking at doing mini splits in there?
No, no, correct. So those would be the exceptions and that's where the engineers have given us estimates on the appropriate RTU, AHU type options to really get that done. But those are such big ticket items that we can really only do one in each school. And so it'll have to be determined ultimately with the school input of, you know, if you can only have this number of dollars, you know, we're best to prioritize in this first phase.
Right, so those larger areas would be cooling towers or you haven't gotten that far in the planning yet?
It hasn't been fully designed. I mean, we, for example, in the gold gym that I spoke of, we have existing rooftop units that can be, you know, that can be taken advantage of. And the cost estimate on that is about 77,000. Whereas you compare it with the cafeteria at the high school and the estimate is about half, half a million dollars, it's a much more complicated effort there. And it was asked, you know, what if we were to try to do the third floor of the high school? Well, the price tag on that is in excess of two million dollars. I mean, it's just not, it's not going to happen for our type of dollars that we're fighting here. So we're really talking about localized areas that seem to have, you know, the most uncomfortable temperatures within the buildings.
Right. So the mini splits, are we talking about heat pumps or are we talking about just AC?
Just AC at this point, yeah. And should also be highlighted that in all of these cases, the cost estimates include upgrades to the electrical service, which would be required in most, in most cases. So that's our approach. We looked at everything from commercial-grade portables and commercial-grade window units to the ductless splits. They have a longer lifespan, they're certainly cooler, I'm sorry, quieter, pros, you know, the pros and cons of those. For the particular use, they're deemed to be the best.
It sounds like the condensate will be a little bit challenging to deal with that in the individual, you know, the learning spaces. But overall, if you do multi-head units, I think that will be a, that would actually be a good solution to the issue.
Right. So we realize we're not going to be, you know, fully AC in these buildings. It's just not going to happen. But to make improvements, I think, is something that our students and our staff and our parents will be greatly supportive of. So we'll see after the fifth.
Historically, is it more needed in the spring or the fall?
I'd say it's fairly even. I mean, we just get these little spikes at the beginning and the end of both seasons where there's, you know, typically just some weather that stays, the humidity is up and, you know, I would say probably a little more so in the, in the fall, but people are more used to it then. I think it was the spring the year before last that we had some hot weather and, you know, I think people are not quite, they're not quite acclimated to summer when it hits.
Is it target temperature, like 75 degrees or what?
We're talking temperature readings that our custodians take for us, you know, well into the 80s, in the mid-upper, you know, mid to even upper 80s in a couple of spaces. So it's both the heat and it's the humidity, it's both, that makes it not the most conducive learning situation. So we're trying to make a better.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Do we need a separate motion for Board of Ed versus Town or one motion?
It's all in one CFPA.
One? Okay. Have a good meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rachel, I have a question about the proposed resolution. It only talks about two Board of Education capital programs.
Yeah, I can dispute that. And I'm not absolutely clear on this, so we didn't have a chance to check with the finance director. But I believe any of the projects that are not included in the resolution will be paid from cash, from fund balance. So I think that falls under a different set of rules. And I don't believe the 8-24 applies to those projects. Because in fact, that is not the case, I think we'd be back to see you on those projects. But I believe that's, that was the discussion that took place at some point during the budget process, but I didn't get full clarification of that before this meeting.
And the one that's, one that is not on the list is the server infrastructure.
Yeah, right. Yeah, there are some town projects also that are not on the list in the resolution.
In the summary of the capital improvement program, line 42, I'm working at this one here. It has district network infrastructure, okay? And it says source of the funds is bonds, just like all the others, besides the sewer system.
Right. I think the Board of Select and, or the Board of Finance made some decisions during the budget process whereby those were going to be paid for from a different source. And we're not going to sell bonds for those projects, but pay for them out of fund balance. That's my understanding.
That's what happened after the public hearing, the night of their meeting, yeah.
We can certainly get clarification on that.
No, like clarification on that.
All right, I'm going to run through the, first of all, I'm Jeff Sharn, the account engineer. And I'm going to run through the fiscal year 16 town side projects. Please stop me if you have any questions. There's a lot of, lot of detail to some of these projects and not sure I'm going to get it all out the first time. So the first project is the Simsbury Farms improvement project for the pool and the rink facilities. This project has numerous facets to it. The three primary ones are to do some lifecycle replacement of the refrigeration equipment for the rink. That system has been around for over 20 years. So mechanicals such as the condensers, the compressors, the heat exchangers need to be refurbished or replaced at this time. So one of the pieces of this project is to do an engineering evaluation of those mechanical components, determine what the best course of action is to affect energy efficiency and of course lifecycle, to verify that they in fact do need to be replaced. And it's cost-effective to do it this time. The second piece, a fairly large piece of this project, is the warming center reconstruction for the ice rink. That facility was actually original to the pool construction, I believe, back in the 1970s. It has a moisture issue. It's frankly uncomfortable and it's not really sited appropriately to get good viewing at the rink. So that facility would be looked at through Architectural Services in a package put together to reconstruct that facility. The third major piece is pool renovation work for the multiple pools at the pool facility. The mechanical equipment, valves, filters, pump motors, all need to be replaced along with other things such as surge tanks and other mechanical devices in the equipment room. The physical pools themselves, the main pool, the replacement of the pool gutter system was a major component of the existing system that was constructed, affects the loss of a lot of water during the course of the use of the pool. So it's an operating cost that we feel we can reduce by replacing the gutter system with a new, more efficient design from a water, new standpoint. Presently, the water has to be topped off every day. Water is very expensive and electricity is obviously necessary to pump that water from a well. So that's one of the major components of the main pool. There's also things such as diving pool equipment, ladders, repairs the pool walls, partial replacement, patching, wall coating, drains, all miscellaneous things that really need to be replaced after, I guess, a lifecycle of the pool has gone through its cycle. So that's the essence of the pool components for that project. There's also miscellaneous improvements at Simsbury Farms, including the repainting of the building, the main building, playground fence replacement. And I think that pretty much sums up all the improvements included in that project. The estimated cost is 1.1 million. It's a one-year project, but it will be, again, broken down into various components once we get into the planning and design phase of the project. Any questions? The next project is the park improvements project. It's number four. This project really affects multiple park facilities throughout town. And again, really has to do with improving the function, the maintenance and the safety of those parks through various equipment replacement or repair. That includes things such as the park pavilion at the Terriffill Park, tennis court resurfacing at both Terriffill Park and Simsbury Farms, a lightning protection system at the Simsbury Farms Golf Course and at Memorial Pool Facility. That particular system will send alerts out when there's a lightning storm imminent to get people to back with the area through smartphones. The waiting pool at Memorial Pool also would be reconstructed as part of this project. And the new basketball court that was never built as part of the master plan for Simsbury Farms would also be constructed as part of this project. There'd also be miscellaneous accessibility upgrades at playgrounds where presently there's not accessible surfaces, i.e. rubber surfaces versus wood chip surfaces that exist in some of these facilities. This project again is a multi-year project. We're looking at 508,000 in the first year. And in the out-years, fiscal year 2020, there'd be another 287,000 required for the project. Any questions? Next project is the open space planning and improvements project. That's number 10. This project in the first year focuses primarily on the Ethel Walker Woods property that the town recently acquired the last piece of. We're presently finalizing an open space master plan that has identified some improvements, minimal improvements really in the first year that are needed to affect better public access, safety, signage, those types of issues. Improving parking facilities, making the trails in part handicap accessible. Design services required for those particular items, hazardous tree removal, widow makers and the like that need to be removed to make it safe for the public. And some culverts and bridges and signage, as I had mentioned, and invasive species removal in some of the locations of the facility, of the property. So this is really the first, first step at Ethel Walker. This project also has other funding in the out-years for facilities such as One Old Bridge Road that was recently acquired. Whether that funding will be required or not at this time is not known, but there are some, there is funding in the out-years for that. There's also a, some money for open space master planning in the out-years along with additional improvements to Ethel Walker Woods. But for fiscal year 13, or for fiscal year 16, it's $145,000 primarily for Ethel Walker. The next project, which is not on the resolution, is the number 16, the Wheatog Planning Route 10 and Code Improvement, Code Prep Project. This project is, came out of the Route 10 corridor study and it would affect the rezoning and study of the Wheatog area and the integration of future potential traffic, traffic improvements into that sort of area through a process similar to the center charrette that occurred, where the center was rezoned to hopefully encourage or organize and, I guess, marketable development activities. So this is a two-year project. First year would be $57,000. Again, this, as I understand it, would be a cash payment out of fund balance. And that's why it's not in the resolution. If no questions, go to the next, which is number 20, salt shed replacement, highway salt shed replacement. This project was actually in prior years, in and out-year, given the severe winter we had this year, there was a difficulty obtaining salt required to treat roads in town. The senior staff thought it best to accelerate this project into this year coming up, which would allow us to purchase salt more on the spot market as opposed to impartial shipments, hopefully get better pricing, have enough salt to, again, not to have to be concerned with deliveries during the winter season. And in essence, to get us into compliance with current regulatory regulations relative salt storage, whereby it all has to be covered. So this is a project that's budgeted at $375,000 and the intent is to do it, get it underway and get it built prior to winter season, if at all possible.
Will this be bigger than the current one?
It would. It would actually allow us to store tonnage required for a normal winter season, whereby now I believe it's probably a third of what we need, in the condition the structure is such that it doesn't need to be replaced. Next project is number 22, municipal building renovations. This project again is not in the resolution. My understanding is that $50,000 being requested would be funded under fund balance. What this project entails is, it's really a look at this building. Building has been renovated in some 25 years, 35 years actually. So the space needs for the various departments is changing. We're finding that, you know, we don't have the right spaces for the departments. Some departments have grown, others have diminished in size. So this would allow us to take a look at the space in this building, come up with a plan and a cost to refit the building, renovate the building, look at the energy systems, the security systems, technologies, and have a better idea of what the cost might be in the out-years to renovate as required in the building. So this is again 50,000 for planning and design services in the first year. In '18, there'd be additional design services with construction anticipated in '19. And we have a placeholder in there right now of 4.6 million potential to renovate the The next project is number 23, dam evaluations and repairs. The town owns five dams throughout town, most of them not really visible. There's a list of dams here, Town Forest Road Dam, Stoddard Reservoir Dam, Library Lane Dam, Simsbury Farms Pond Dam, and Lake Basil Dam. Recent regulatory requirements require the towns to inspect their dams periodically, whereby before there was no specific requirements. These are generally low hazard dams, but still there's liability and safety issues that need to be, I guess, looked at. So the first year of this project is essentially to inspect those dams and to do any emergency repairs that we may or may not encounter as part of those inspections. And also to be, again, compliant with new regulations relative to dam inspections. In the next year, '17, we had budgeted 145,000 for a possible repair of those dams. We don't know what that number's going to be, but we did put a placeholder in there in case there's, there's a need. Next project is 28, is the Public Works Complex Infrastructure Improvements. Sitting down with staff over the course of the last year, we found that there was multiple projects that most likely and logically should have been aggregated to affect new infrastructure and future facilities anticipated at the Public Works yard. Presently, we're in the process of planning for a truck wash facility. It's going to be under construction this year. To serve that facility, things like electrical service, water service, and gas service would be incorporated or upgraded in the Public Works yard to in part support that truck wash facility and also just to provide a general upgrade for infrastructure in that facility. In the out-years, we're looking at installing a sprinkler or a fire suppression system in the vehicle storage garage. There's probably $3 million worth of rolling stock that would be difficult to replace in the short term if in fact we had a fire in that facility. We thought it a good investment to invest in, again, a fire suppression system. Those systems need additional water. Truck washes need water, so again, reason why we're bringing new water service into the facility. There's also other components to the system such as a generator install. We were fortunate enough to get a, donated generator from the Ethel Walker School. We're planning on re-circuiting the Public Works yard to accommodate that facility so the whole facility could run during an emergency, as an emergency sort of facility, whereas now it has partial generator power only. There's also not a, there's not a sewer connection presently at the Public Works yard. So for a truck wash and again for wash water, you need to actually discharge to a sanitary sewer system. So this project includes a connection to Longview Drive Pump Station through a forsting that's partially installable already, but we need to install a new lift station again to serve those new expanded facilities. We're also bringing natural gas downtown Forest Road, and you'll see that on your next item on the agenda. That would require us to change out unit heaters in the Public Works repair facilities to affect that conversion to a different fuel. Presently, we have propane at the Public Works yard. And in the out-years, there's other items like roof replacement, I mentioned sprinklers, and storm, just general storm drainage and security improvements that we want to do at the Public Works yard. So this project accommodates all those improvements. And again, some of them are ongoing and hopefully this will complement those facilities.
Do they do diesel and gasoline fueling at that facility or do they go off-site?
They do have onsite facilities. Those have been upgraded recently, so we're in good shape on those at the present time. But there's, yeah, there's above ground facilities for both these and land gas. Next project, number 29, Town Hall Site and Safety Improvements. This project in the first year includes 45,000 for planning and design services. As a result of a couple of incidents during the course of the year and other needs that were presented by other departments, we thought it best to look at the entire site, the municipal complex here, and a look at safety improvements, particularly the pedestrian crossings on Route 10, the vehicular access points along the frontage of the property. We think we could do some improvements there to affect a better movement of traffic and a little safer condition for both pedestrians and vehicles. There is a project that's funded to repay the parking lot. So these improvements would kind of dovetail and get incorporated into one project so that it could be looked at. kind of dovetail and get incorporated into one project so that it could be looked at holistically and maybe do some improvements to safety and maybe affects an additional parking. The police department has also requested a little additional security in the rear for both vehicular storage, just storage in general, the emergency generator that's located in the rear, and possibly creating some additional storage through the construction of the retaining wall in the rear of the building. Presently, as you know, the central school access road, we think we can push that investment back a bit through the construction of the retaining wall to affect some additional storage. Side more curving and pavement replacement in the parking lot, and again, some of it's in pretty sad shape. The landscaping needs to be upgraded to a, you know, moderate level, not a real big expense. And the maintenance garage, the old garage that's located on the north side of the facility is inadequate for onsite storage of things like lawn equipment, plow equipment and the like. We'd like to replace that building with a new building of slightly larger size to affect additional storage at this facility. So the first year, we're anticipating $45,000 for planning and design. We would refine our costs and we'd include a $385,000 expense in the second year to hopefully implement the project. Trying to speed this up a little bit, I know we're a little long-winded here. Next project is number thirty, the Portable Generator slash Generator Infrastructure Project. This is a project you'll see in two places, one under the town side and one under the water pollution control side, being partially funded with sewer use funds. And what this project does in the first year allows us to buy a portable generator that can be used at various facilities to provide emergency power, or to keep the lights on, so to speak, to keep the heat running, keep the heating systems functioning during extended electrical outages. This project really came about because during, I believe it was Irene, the generator here at Town Hall was very close to failure during that extended outage. And because our emergency operations center is actually staffed from here, the police department was here, there was a risk this building would have needed to be evacuated during that storm. So what we're going to do here is actually provide a secondary source of generator through some recircuining and providing an outlet for a portable generator. That generator will be able to be brought here to affect maintenance on the generator during extended outages, and also, again, used in other facilities such as Eno or the library. There's also a need at the water pollution control facility for a replacement generator. So we've worked out the shared arrangement where they can use it on a day-to-day basis, where the town would have it more accessible during an emergency if needed. So essentially splitting the cost amongst the two entities. There's also additional resurfing required at Eno and/or the library that would allow us to use this portable generator at those facilities. Right now, we can use it, we can use it to its full extent throughout the building. We can do it in part for certain portions of lighting and heating in buildings. So this would be an improvement on that particular capability. We're also going to hand the old generator down that's presently at the Public Works yard and send it down to the Parks Department, their maintenance facility, so they would have emergency power for their operations, for their storms.
Is that a mobile generator?
It is a mobile, 250 KW generator.
How about the 100, the old one?
The old one is actually, no, it's a 100 KW, I believe it's a 40 KW, presently located in the Public Works complex and would be relocated down to Parks Department Facility on Simsberry Farms. I guess it's 100 KW, I thought it was 40, but I guess it's 100.
But it's stationary?
It is, yeah. So $80,000 in the first year for half the cost of that portable generator. Next project is number thirty-one, which is not in the resolution. This was a project planning fund that was being established. What we're finding is for capital and project planning, where projects haven't been approved, there's a need for things such as environmental investigations, surveys, permit evaluations and conceptual studies, cost estimates, to better refine projects. What we're finding, some of the projects that were programmed, were not programmed at the right funding level. So this would allow us funded during the year prior to actually entering these in the budget process to refine scopes and costs for future projects. So we're asking for $28,000 in the first year and $25,000 in the out-years. And again, my understanding is this is going to be paid throughout a fund balance as opposed to being bonded.
Jeff, can we go back to the portable generator, please?
Sure.
What's the source of the funding for that one?
This would be through the sale bonds, $80,000 from the town side, and you'll see it on a future project on project number forty.
Yeah.
There's another $80,000 from sewer use funds.
So I don't see either of those on the resolution.
Yeah, again, I believe, I believe they're going to be funded from fund balance, based on my understanding.
Okay, so I'm confused now between bonds and fund balance.
Again, the Board of Finance, the Board is selected, apparently, again, I'm kind of new to the process myself, I make decisions during the end of the fiscal year, and because of the, I guess, the cost, being relatively low cost, that it makes sense, it makes sense in some cases to fund projects out of, from cash as opposed to borrowing money from.
Okay, so there's a little misalignment between the description and what's been proposed by the Board of Finance.
In terms of this particular summary sheet, you mean?
Yeah. And the resolution?
Yes, and again, I just, the summary sheet, I don't believe was updated after the decisions were made.
Okay.
To fund those out of cash. But again, we will give clarification on that, and if we need to come back on those projects, we will come back for the eight dash twenty-four referral. The next project's number thirty-two, various drainage improvements. Under fiscal year of 2016, we're asking for $175,000 with additional funding in eighteen of $125,000. As part of the pavement management program that was, I guess, initiated last year, what Public Works is finding is that, you know, when, before they determine the right treatment or rehabilitation for a road, that in a lot of cases drainage, underground drainage needs to be replaced or refurbished before they, you know, put, I guess, good money after bad. The original pavement management program did not accommodate drainage improvements, so this essentially would allow funding that at one time was in the general fund budget, as I understand it, to do drainage improvements as they go in the program out there, pavement management program. Things like culvert replacements, catch basin rebuilds, pipe replacement. A lot of the pipe in town is old corrugated metal. It's, there's been, in some cases, partial collapses, in other cases, just corrosion. It's to the point where it needs to be replaced. Similar with masonry structures, again, those typically have to be replaced every 15 to 20 years, just due to deterioration. So there's, there's some projects that have been identified specifically in this project, East Wheaton Street, Westledge Road, Oskin Road, Canal Street, and Terriffle Heights, where, you know, some significant drainage improvements need to be completed. Next project is number thirty-three, sewer main extensions. This funding essentially provides for extensions to sanitary sewers as they are requested or as need arises from the public through the failure of sanitary individual systems, or just for the desire to have sewer service. This $371,000 is anticipated to pay for projects that have been identified, such as Minisunk Drive, or other neighborhoods, or projects that may come to our attention over the next year. This is paid for other sewer use fees, again, not bonded, so basically paid for out of the WPCA budget. Next project is number thirty-four, inline grinder and screen replacements. This is a $260,000 project. It's actually the second year of the two-year project last year. The inline grinder and screen replacement was completed for one of the inlet structures going into the plant, was very successful, a lot of the work was done by WPCA staff. This actually, you know, goes ahead and finishes the second one. It allows for, again, more cost-effective maintenance and operation and disposal of the screenings that are actually taken from this device. Again, this is going to be paid for under sewer use funds, not to be bonded by the Next project, number thirty-five, is the Hoppeo Center Area Sewer Repairs. We are requesting $135,000 in the first year, essentially to do investigatory work to determine the condition of the existing sewer, which is one of the older sewers in town, through such, such methods as TV inspection to determine, again, the condition of that pipe and the cost of the pipe, and where possible spot repairs may be, need to be done. So this is basically investigatory work throughout the length of Hoppeo Street and the Center Area. There is funding in the out-years to replace that sewer. I'm not sure whether that's required yet or not, but the study will tell us the condition of the facility. Next project is number thirty-seven, which is the West Mountain Road Area Sewer Interceptor Design. This particular project is a $50,000 request in the first year to essentially look at the western portion of town, see what the feasibility of extending sewer is, what the cost may be. There are neighborhoods in that particular area of town that have failing systems, so this would provide the essence of a feasibility and cost study to determine, again, what those costs might be and what, you know, how many pump stations and the like, what facilities are required to actually serve that area. This is also not in the resolution, so again, assuming this is being paid out of cash or out of sewer use fund, most likely the sewer use fund. In the out-years, there are, there is some additional funding for final design, if impact or feasibility study proves to be fruitful for, for extension of the system. Next project is number forty, Portable Generator Project. Again, I think I explained that a little bit before, this would be the other half the expense to be paid for under sewer use fund dollars, primarily for the use of the sewer WPCA during normal operations, and the town would have use of it during emergency events. Number forty-one is a portable six-inch dry, dry pump that replaces an existing bypass pump that the WPCA presently has. This is used, again, for collapses of sewer lines, bypasses that are necessary during maintenance at pump stations. It would, again, just give them more in-house capability, and this is a particular piece of equipment that's used quite often by them. So I think that's all of the first, first-year projects. If there's any questions, or if you want me to discuss any of the projects in the out-years, I'd be happy to do that.
I'd like to make sure that, I may have missed one or two, that I think on this resolution sheet, even though we're going to do the brief form resolution, we should probably make sure we list everything you listed. And I have, I've checked off the ones that you've listed. I have in addition the Wheaton Planning Study, the Project Planning Funds, the Portable Generator, this all under General Purpose Projects. And I don't know if I missed any in that category or not, or add-ons. Then underwater pollution, I've added on the West Mountain Road Interceptor, the other half, the generator, and the dry pump.
Right.
And then the Board of Ed, the network infrastructure wasn't listed. I don't know if anyone else has any additional ones, or do I get them, Jeff?
I think there was one more, the Municipal Building Renovations, number twenty-two.
Number twenty-two?
Yeah, twenty-two, okay. My apologies on that.
These are, if you're interested, I think they're all, all the ones, just to make it wrong, these are all the ones that are, have funds in the first fiscal year listed on the sheet titled Forest Suckman Improved Marsh Lines, Point Fifteen Capital Improvement Program Summary.
That's right.
Now, is, anything that was in that first column that requires funding in this year?
And there may be some projects that don't require eight dash twenty-four but are funded under the CIP, if you know what I'm saying. It's a, it's possible. I haven't reviewed the state statute on it, but, you know, if it's not a public improvement, so to speak, such as a piece of equipment, it may not need to come to you for eight dash twenty-four. I'm not sure that was the criteria, but.
So by citing them, are we, is that overkill, or is that proper to do that?
Maybe, belt suspenders, probably, if you know what I mean.
You don't need.
I think typically you've brought them all in front of your commission in the recent past. But again, if there is an issue with needing to come back, certainly we would come back for those additional.
So are you suggesting the ones that are not on the draft resolution be added? Well, I mean, we went through them, and they're for this year, or for 2016. I think that for due diligence, we should probably include them, unless staff thinks we're crazy to do that. I mean, we're gonna, all we're gonna do is read the brief motion, I think, and then list the items included, which really are the summary of these two sheets for this year. But you tell me if that's not the way you want it done.
Typically, eight twenty-four is required for, let's have a page, is not required for something like maintenance. So a lot of the things that Jeff went over are items that relate to the maintenance of, or purchase of equipment that is not physical improvement to any land owned by the town. So that would not normally go through an eight twenty-four process, but the CIP in general typically does, is my understanding. So as a whole, you were presented with the entire CIP, including those items that would not normally land before the board in other situations.
So.
So I would say include them, just as a.
Just be safe?
Yeah.
Even though they're not eight twenty-four?
Yeah, I would say you could read the resolution and say, additionally, that the commission is accepting of the items that are, were additionally discussed, if that is the feeling of the board.
Can't hurt.
I'm sorry? Yeah, I would recommend that you add those, if that can be done administratively now without the hard copy and proxy.
Have you presented to the zoning commission?
We have not, we're not required to do that. It's part of our, just our process.
Okay, then, Rachel, I have a question about the title of the resolution.
It has been amended.
Okay, so it says Planning Commission now? I understand some towns have a combined planning and zoning commission. And also that applies to the full text resolution.
Yes, so the hard copies that were passed out with the packets tonight.
And it's updated in the west.
Either, in other words, each, or we?
Yeah, we removed end zoning in both those places.
Is there a reason why you didn't discuss the senior center? Because it's listed, at least from here on seventeen.
Yeah, there's a, there's actually a footnote, I believe, on your, on your spreadsheet, if you go to page two, about in the middle with the asterisk on your notes. It says that, based on a number of considerations, including the result of a townwide survey, a capital proposal. a capital proposal for the senior center project may be presented to the Board of Finance for their consideration. And for potential inclusion, as a November referendum, mine of the senior center has not been approved for inclusion, and we made that budget referendum. So I think the 8-24 is about to referendum, as I understand it, as opposed to the capital improvement program? So essentially, it's, the Board of Selectment has approved the capital program, but they don't have authorization to spend. So technically, I guess, says that it's not an approved project to move forward. That's kind of a discussion that occurred during the budget process. So I would suggest that not be included at this time.
Okay, just one other little editorial note on the summary resolution. I notice an asterisk after Simsbury Farms Rank and Growth Improvements and also down on one of the Board of Ed projects, the climate control. Does that asterisk indicate anything of significance?
Yeah, I think what it indicates is that these projects have to go to referendum because they're over 1% of the total budget amount. Those are the two projects that will be on the ballot.
Okay, so that, I don't know who's authoring the resolution, but do we have the footnote foot or something?
We can certainly have that directed. This was actually prepared by our bond counsel.
Get them in here.
Probably should, huh? Get our apologies on that.
Do you have the full list of the ones that were...
Yeah. You read this, WTOG planning study, project planning funds, projects in general, municipal building improvements to this building, portable generator, those are all under general purpose projects. And we're adding to water pollution sewer, the West Mountain Road interceptor, and the other generator and the dry pump. And then the Board of Ed, the network infrastructure. Now, do you think, to be official, do you want us to read into the minutes pages one and two of the attachment or can we do the summary from page one with the preamble that you've written here or somebody's written?
I would say the first sheet and then whatever that additional list is as an end also, these items.
Are there any questions from the, maybe anyone else? Would someone like to read the resolution? Or you want me to read it? Do you want to read it?
Bill, you always, you do it last year. Rachel sent me an email showing me you do it, so you have a stronger voice. If you'd like to do it, you may, if you can read my writing.
Okay, I'll try to read it. Maybe I'll need a little help. So I'd like to make a motion to return a positive referral to the Board of Selectment consistent with the draft resolution of planning commission, considering the projects that are listed in that draft resolution. But in addition to those projects, add the WTOG planning study, project planning funds, portable generator, and municipal building improvements for Eno.
This probably...
Oh, Town Hall, Town Hall. And under the water pollution control projects list, add West Mountain Road Interceptor, the portable generator, is that a portable generator, Jeff? Yeah, and the dry prime pump. And then under the Board of Education projects, add the network infrastructure upgrade.
Just to read that.
Do we have a motion?
You've made a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second. Mr. Kowalski, second. Discussion? Any comments? Okay, I guess we vote and then maybe read this into the record. Does that make sense?
Well, I've referenced the draft.
The document.
Okay. When it's presented, I think it'll make sense.
Okay.
Because we've made the motion and we're going to vote on it soon.
Okay. We have a motion made and seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else?
Is the second item on the agenda?
What was that, Rachel?
Is the second item on the agenda?
Second item on the agenda.
Yeah, okay, yeah, the land swap. Okay, item B, Connecticut General Statute is 824, referral from the Board of Selectment regarding the proposed mutual exchange of property, the State of Connecticut for Town Forest Road in connection with gas line installation.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's a map you can read. This is not perfect either.
Maybe a little verbal description.
Sure.
There are ants here. I see ants.
Sorry about that. So during the process of trying to acquire gas service for the Public Court Chard and for Tooten Hills Road, it was discovered that Town Forest Road is not owned by the Town of Central. It's actually part of its state land. They acquired it through acquisition of railroad right-of-way. That used to be an old central railroad corridor. So in order to install a gas line, we would either need to get an eastern from the State of Connecticut or through some creative land swapping, it was proposed to swap some land that the town owed for the town farm or Town Forest Road right-of-way. So two parcels were identified, parcel A and parcel B, that are owned by the Town of Central. They're located on the south side of Nimrod Road, essentially along that dirt portion of the road, if you're familiar with the area. Those properties actually abut the Massaco State Forest. So a proposal was floated into the Department of Environmental Protection to swap those two parcels, parcel A and B, that total approximately 6.5 acres, or the Town Forest Road right-of-way from Nimrod Road to Stratton Brook Road, which is approximately 10 acres. So mapping was prepared, title policies were prepared, deeds were prepared. Board of Selectment essentially looking favorably upon the transaction. Town attorneys reviewed it. First date statutes, again, 8-24 referral was sent to the planning commission. And that's why we're here today. The gas line in Town Forest would be installed at no cost to the town. It's kind of a nice opportunity. And again, Tooten Hills School would also take advantage of that through a conversion to natural gas, hopefully lower energy costs.
Which way would the gas main come from?
Would actually come from Stratton Brook Road and extend to Tooten Hills. Not sure whether it would be looped into West Mountain Road at this point because there is no gas down in that area. West Mountain Road's present. Last year, it was actually extended almost to Flaming Farm going south. So that's really up to the marketers at CNG or Eversource, whether that'll happen or not. So again, this is a simpler way of getting the gas line through a more typical process where gas facilities, any utility can locate within a public right-of-way. And again, that no cost to the town. So we're asking, I guess, for your favorable approval of this.
Any questions?
Yeah, what if some of the, I remember reading some of the conditions of the sale, where the state wants the town, you know, obviously to maintain the road and then include some markings?
Yeah, they want to make sure, again, because it is a highly traveled area for pedestrians and bicycle traffic, they just wanted to make sure we maintain that accessibility for those particular modes of transportation. So we kind of negotiated with them to, you know, to basically approve signage and markings and kind of reinforce the fact that, again, that the vehicle traffic needs to kind of yield to the...
This was the state of Connecticut that was concerned with that?
It was.
They were so concerned, they couldn't do it themselves previously.
Apparently, yeah. Apparently couldn't pave the road either, but that's another issue.
Yeah. The usual state.
So who plowed that road, Jeff?
We've been plowing it and actually it's been on our town made road list, I think, since as far back as our records show. So it's kind of interesting. So we have been getting credit for the town made road grants incrementally through the mileage that Town Forest Road represents.
Town Forest is town property.
Yes.
So are there trails that connect Town Forest across Town Forest Road into any of that wooded area?
Yeah, there actually is.
Penwood, or not Penwood, but...
There is some that go west, I believe, into...
Goes right, goes right straight through to Town Forest.
I'm just trying to see if the town acquiring Town Farm or Town Forest Road creates a contiguous, you know, path for people using, isn't there a path that runs up behind the...
Yeah, goes right across. You go Town Forest, you go straight ahead and you go right in, go all the way to...
West Mountain, yeah.
Yeah.
But the club...
No, you go straight, you go over Town Farm Road, straight through there.
The town property I'm not as familiar with, I know there is a trail that's been cut or blazed through just south of the Public Court Chard.
That was presented to us last year, but it might have, I can't remember. It had to do with the improvements at the town garage.
Yes. I'm not familiar with those, to be honest, with that particular trail.
So this has no effect on the private club that's there, the Fun Club?
It has none. It actually provides that access maybe that they don't have now, at least through that side of the property. Legal access.
And what does the state benefit from here?
Again, the state gets some contiguous land to the Massaco State Forest, Massaco State. The property's been surveyed and mapped at the town's expense. There was some expense, but it was minimal. So it just fits in with their policy for acquiring land and that it, you know, provides a larger contiguous open space parcel.
Any other questions? Would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion and we accept the proposal as written.
Make a positive referral to the proposal. Second motion. Okay, we have a motion and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Tell your wife it's my fault. It's after 7:20.
Did you second that? Ron did.
Ron did. Rachel, do you have any other business? Otherwise, we're just going to do minutes and you can, if you'd like. Mr. Drake, would you like two minutes?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rachel. Nice job.
You get a positive referral.
Next time you see you, big day.
All right. Let's review the minutes for the regular scheduled meeting of April 14th, 2015. Are there any changes, additions, deletions to page one? Hearing no, no, page two.
At the bottom, line 88, it says, explaining the town has only 3% of the state required affordable housing. Wouldn't that be better if it said 3% of the 10% required? It isn't 3% of the number.
You're right. And it's actually 3.1 is the real figure.
Yeah.
So what's changes to 3.1 of the 10%?
Of the 10.
Good.
On the required 10%.
Or 30%. Who said a little easier? But, anything on page three?
Yeah, I think line 92, if I'm thinking of the right thing, it's really the workforce zone overlay, or workforce housing overlay zone?
Correct.
Oh, because it's...
Instead of the affordable housing overlay.
That's right.
So workforce...
Housing.
Housing overlay zone.
What line do you want?
92.
So change affordable to workforce.
Workforce, yeah, because that's the Central area.
Anything else on page three? Hearing no other changes, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to accept the minutes as amended?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion? None. I have a vote on approval of the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes pass. Thank you very much. Thank you, Janice. Thank you, Ken, SCTV. I think at our next meeting, when Heim's back, we'll do a little discussion on the workforce versus affordable and see if we can get on top of that. He's at a conference now, but it will be that next time. All right, any other motions to be made?
I have a question, just see if you're interested. Not long ago, the town attorney went briefly with the zoning commission, kind of laid out some of the responsibilities that may not be as clear as others, talked about the relationship between commissions, who can testify where, just kind of cleaned up some misconceptions about what we can and cannot do in his eyes. And he's willing to come here and do that. All he needs is an invitation from the chairman. I think it'd be worth our time to kind of listen to him, see if he has a say. If we have any questions about things, we'll go right to the horse's mouth and get an answer.
I will ask him to do that as well. And then we also, in preparation for that, if we all read the short form that Harold gave us from the thing that we went to in Middletown, that will be a help too. It'll prompt, gives some good background information.
Yeah, it's bound to stimulate some conversation, I think, and especially where. Some members have been around a couple years, some not so much. I think some have been around for many years down there. I think there's always something to be learned.
Okay. Any other comments? Thank you all. Do we hear a motion or adjourn?
Yeah, we need a motion.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, discussion, no discussion. Thank you.
Funding for Simsbury Community Television is provided in part by contributions from viewers like you. Thank you.